Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's work session for Monday, February the 7th, 2022. I have already called the meeting to order and the board has just reconvened from closed session. We just want to say thank you for joining us tonight and welcome to our viewing audience that's joining us live stream. And if all will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we are going to observe a moment of silence for the student that passed away a couple of weeks ago, Ms. Haley Molina Dominguez. Please join us.
And our thoughts and prayers go out to her family. Board members, we will begin with setting the agenda, which is 6.01. I would ask that we amend the agenda to change a couple of items for tonight. I would like to move 8.03 under 7.02 and also 10.02, both items being a report by Dr. Kapiki on COVID and the actual board vote.
I'll make the motion to do that.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Mr. Farr. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. And with that, I'm also going to change my position of board chair comments after Dr. Kapiki. So we're going to begin with 7.02, Dr. Kapiki.
Thank you. Before we begin tonight in the presentation, just want to clarify something for all of our public. I understand the difficulty that any weather decision impacts on parents in our communities. And I will tell you, this morning was a very difficult decision to make, but I know that we made the right decision. What I would ask people to understand is to be patient and understand that when we make these decisions, we're doing it with safety and the best interest of children in mind. We have a county that is 300-plus square miles large. You know, what happens in the northern end often doesn't happen in the southern end and vice versa. So on the consideration this morning, when I talked with all the folks who go out roughly about 3:30, 4 o'clock in the morning and monitor our roads and try and monitor the conditions, they can change very quickly. We're constantly trying to keep an update on them. But nonetheless, we made the decision initially, it was a two-hour delay, and within that timeframe, the northern part of the district started to develop some ice and some sleet in some areas where our buses had some ice on them and there were some slick roads. So the decision was made to close due to that fact, due to some of the icing conditions in parts of the district. And I understand full well that that wasn't the case in all of the district, but we did what we did in the best interest of children to keep people safe. So I do understand the difficulty that that presents to parents, and none of us enjoy those decisions, but I want you to understand the rationale behind that. Our folks go out very early in the morning, assess the road conditions, communicate with our transportation and our cabinet folks, and we make sure that we take in all considerations before we make those decisions. And then we communicate them out through our communications department and try and effectively get that mess out as early as we can. Unfortunately, today causes some difficult timing of that information. So to our public, I appreciate your patience and your understanding, and I want you always to know that when we do make these decisions, we're doing it in the best interest of our students and trying to keep everyone safe. One thing we are going to look at is how we make that decision and possibly zoning off our district in certain areas in the future where if it's possible to conduct school in certain zones and not in the others, that we may do that. So that's something we're going to analyze and look at as we move forward into the future. And I appreciate the feedback from the folks that did address that concern about the weather with me today, so I thank you for that. The feedback is welcome, even when it's constructive criticism, I do appreciate it. I do take that into consideration. Secondly, our remote learning, I would just again like parents to be patient with us with that as well. I'd be the first one to say to you that I think our teachers do a fantastic job, work extraordinarily hard, and do everything they can to make sure that your children get a first-class education. I am very impressed with the teachers in the school district. But I will tell you, it's very difficult to flip a switch and go to remote learning overnight, and we struggle with that as well. That's something that we're looking at, we know we can get better at it, but that's not a criticism of our teachers. And we have to remember that pre-pandemic, we asked our teachers to turn to remote learning and be experts at it within 72 hours. That's a very difficult thing to do. I think they've done a great job from March 2020 up until now in terms of working on making sure that their asynchronous and synchronous learning skill sets are there to help children. And when we do that blended style, that our children are getting the best that they can from our teachers. Nonetheless, that being said, it doesn't mean that we cannot improve the remote learning in our school district, it's something that we are aware of and we are working with. But I thank our teachers for all the hard work that they continue to do in making sure that our students receive a first-class education. So I appreciate everyone's input again on that as well. Now I'd like to hand it over to our Chief Financial Officer, Mrs. Herndon. She's going to give us a compensation presentation and an update on some of the things that we've talked about the last couple of weeks. Mrs. Herndon?
Thank you, Dr. Kapiki, and hello, board. I'm excited to share with you some of the various compensation provisions that have been afforded to our staff over the course of this school year. We'll start by talking about recapping. I know that I've shared some of this already with you all, but thought we would put it in one place for your review. These are provisions that came about from the recently and very late approved state budget that we were made aware of in mid to late November. We'll start with our teachers and certified instructional support staff, and these are all compensation provisions that were paid by our payroll staff and received by our certified folks in our own, actually, January 31st, 2022. The first is the $1,000 premium pay bonus that was a part of our state budget, and that was paid to anybody that was employed as of December 1st, 2021. In addition to that, and as part of the premium pay provision, if an employee made less than $75,000, they received an additional $500 in premium pay as part of the state budget provision. We also paid a $300 bonus to all teachers and instructional staff if those folks were employed with our district on January 1st, 2022. We were able to pay a $1,000 state ESAR-funded bonus related to COVID training, and that training had to take place between March 20th, 2020, when we first went home, related to the pandemic, all the way through December 31st, 2022. So if we had training options that qualified during that time period, and we did lots of them, we were able to pay that $1,000 COVID training bonus to our-
How many took the training?
Pardon?
How many took the training?
2,600 or so-
About half of the-
Across that time period.
It's about half of our employees?
All of our certified folks.
Okay, that's just for certified? That's just for certified?
Yes, all of these provisions are just for certified. We also paid, this was the only performance-based provision that came out of the state budget because we've not been testing in the past couple of years, we don't have the normal annual performance payout bonuses, but we did have those related to our AP and IB CTE courses, and we paid those out as well, and they range anywhere up to $3,500 based on actual performance on related tests in the last school year. And then finally, you will remember that we talked about every LEA employee, public school district employee, received a raise whether you were certified or classified as outlined in our state budget provisions. And we were required to make those raises effective July 1st, 2021. So on January 31st, we made that retro pay adjustment back to July 1st in one lump sum payment as directed by our state to all of our certified folks, as summarized on this chart. So this is all the things that happened in January as it relates to different compensation provisions that popped out of our state budget for our teachers and our certified instructional staff. For all other staff, we also paid on January 31st the premium pay bonus, which is the exact same structure as what we just reviewed for our certified staff, $1,000 for everyone, and then an additional $500 if an employee makes less than $75,000. And for the remainder of our staff, we also processed on January 31st the retro active pay increases back to July 1st, 2021, and that was a lump sum bonus of retro pay that was made in January. The remaining to-do around the state budget provisions is because we had a retro active adjustment to base pay for all district employees that was outlined in the state budget, if any supplement or our longevity payments are based off of base pay, we have to go back and adjust those payments retroactively as well, and we'll be doing that in February. We pushed as much as we possibly could into the January timeframe so that we could get that money into the hands of our employees sooner versus later, but we had to make some choices in the spirit of doing it timely and accurately, and so we're going to focus on the retro pay associated with supplemental pay and longevity pay in February and get those amounts paid out by the end of the month. We've talked about the fact that we increased our teacher supplement from 10% to 12% of base pay during 2021, 2022, and this is just a chart to hopefully help the board and the public understand what that means for our teachers. So you'll see three different columns. We captured the amount of the supplement for a beginning teacher, a teacher that has 15 years of experience, and then a teacher that has 25-plus years of experience. And these are all calculations that are based on the Bachelor Teacher Scale. So there's several state-supported teacher scales depending on the level of degree of a teacher, but just for simplicity's sake, we reference the Bachelor's Teacher Scale. And so as you're probably aware, we make our supplement payments in two equal installments, 50% in November and 50% in June. And so you'll see, for example, for a beginning teacher who has a base salary of $35,460, at 12%, that supplement would be $4,255.20, and you'll see the two equal installments that are made, those payments are made in November and in June. So this is just to hopefully give you some idea of the magnitude of the supplement and how that plays out.
Mr. Walter, could you hold questions until later? It's just really interruptive, and I can't hear you down there, so can you hang on just for a little bit?
I will, but she's top of mind at the moment, so. Okay.
Well, just can you write your questions down, and let's just do it in the discussion time? Thank you.
We also have talked about the 60% bonus that was paid to our classified staff in May of 2021, and this chart summarizes the positions that received that bonus and the number of employees in each of those positions. So you'll see 1,785 classified staff members received that bonus, and you can see in this chart the positions that received it and how many employees are in each of those positions. Just additional information to supplement the conversation that we had at a previous board meeting. We've also talked about this, but as a reminder, because of the blessing of a childcare stabilization grant that we've received, we were able to support some retention and recruitment bonuses for our Kids Plus personnel, which is really important because it's very difficult to staff both our Kids Plus operations and our school nutrition operations, I thought I pressed that, sorry, as well. And so you'll see that we were able to offer a retention bonus of $1,000 to all of our current staff. We did that in January 2022 for our Kids Plus personnel. We also have offered for the first 30 new hires that stay on board with us for 90 days are receiving a $1,000 signing bonus, for lack of a better word. And then we are going to be offering some future bonuses in June 2022 funded also by this grant, and also December 22 and June 2023 to continue to really focus on our ability to recruit and retain qualified folks to support our Kids Plus organization. And a part of this funding allows us to do some amped-up marketing efforts to make sure that we cast our net very widely and that we're able to attract broadly employees that are willing and interested in coming to work for our Kids Plus. Likewise, we just recently shared with you a similar retention and recruitment bonus structure for our school nutrition personnel. Current employees, very similar to what we just talked about for Kids Plus, $500 for our current employees, they received that actually in December 2021, and then for the first 50 new hires, if they stay with us for 90 days, get that $500 recruitment signing bonus as well. And we are also going to be considering, these are special ESAR-funded dollars that are 100% intended to support these efforts for school nutrition personnel, we're going to look at doing that again in December 2022 with that same ESAR-funded money. We also, back in the spring of 2021, talked about being more competitive with our bus driver pay. We were experiencing a real shortage in bus drivers because of some activity that was going on in neighboring districts, and so with your support, we increased our starting pay by 7.45% over $1 an hour, starting pay up to $16 an hour for our bus drivers. And to make that equitable across the bus driver scale, we applied that same 7.45% increase to our bus driver pay scale up to the state maximum that is established for our classified staff. But we did take a look at any employee that would not benefit from an increase because they were already at the state maximum level of pay, and we afforded them a $500 bonus because they would not be getting the increase in their base pay. And we had about 35 employees that benefited from that $500 one-time payment. At this point, and in response to the conversation that we had at the last meeting and the board's request that we look at an additional bonus for our teachers and instructional certified staff, we are recommending that we consider a $500 bonus in addition to everything that we just walked through for our certified staff. This would be about 2,600 employees. We would pay this bonus in either February or March, and the total cost, including the district's share of our FICA, Social Security, and Medicare payment, about a $1.4 million cost to the district. We have reviewed our current ESAR budget and our planned spending against that budget and believe that we can redirect $1.4 million of that budget towards covering this additional $500 bonus for our certified staff. Now that would be pending the budget amendment that we would have to apply for and get approval from Raleigh around, but we are prepared to do that and feel confident that we have the appropriate reason for asking for a budget amendment, and don't expect that there would be any pushback from the Department of Public Instruction in Raleigh in submitting that budget amendment. So that's our recommendation based on the conversation that we had at the last board meeting and what we believe makes sense and that we can fund entirely with that redirected ESAR funding and not have to ask the board to consider dipping into fund balance. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, and Mr. Walter, I'm going to start with you, and could you restate the first question that you asked to begin with?
I'm sure I remember the first question. What was the first?
The first question was back here about the ESAR bonus and how many people received it and took the training.
Took the training.
And it was 2,600.
Which is a pretty good-
All of our certified staff that were employed on the day, January 1st.
100% got the bonus?
Mm-hmm.
Excellent, okay. On that one slide with the teacher supplement, the 12%, is that a 10-month employee, is that a 12-month employee, is that everybody?
Those are 10-month employees, certified staff. Yes, sir.
Okay. And I guess my last question had to do with how we're paying for it, and you just answered that question. The timetable when they would get paid would be when?
For the 500?
Uh-huh.
February or March. We're finishing up all the other provisions as I mentioned earlier.
With our approval, you can-
If we can get it done in February, which is escaping us fast, we will, but certainly no later than March.
Okay, so with our approval, you can move forward with this. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Okay, I'm going to back up to Ms. Sandage.
Start down there if you don't mind.
I'll go with Mr. Farr.
Sign from me. No, as we said before, every little bit helps, and appreciate your effort, and thank you, and I'm sure we won't have any problem getting this passed through.
Ms. Blackwell?
I just also want to echo that and say thanks for doing this, and yeah, everything that we can do to help give to the teachers will be greatly appreciated. I do have a question though for you. This was a question that was brought up to me actually by another teacher, and this has to do with supplements. Have we ever paid supplements for 10-month employees on a monthly basis, or has it always been November and June that we've-
Not that I'm aware of, but I can find that out and get back to you. I just haven't been here long enough to know that history.
That's okay.
I think for, as far back as I've been told, it's been two times a year. But I can sure check on that.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll tell you what, I might be able to help with that one just a little bit. Some of it's been on the board a little bit longer. I don't ever remember it being any different, and I think actually that two-part was because of the June to carry over when they're not being paid during the summertime, possibly?
Oh, maybe, right. So the state used to mandate an installment program where teachers could have a bit of their paycheck across the 10 months put away to get a check in July and August, June or July, depending on the calendar. They disbanded that program, but we maintained a similar program here at Cabarrus County Schools so that our teachers would have steady flow of income across the summer months. Perhaps that's what they were thinking.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, all right, so they have, is this saying they have not been paid then? They've been paid the November supplement, or they haven't been paid? Okay.
Yes, ma'am, they've been paid the November 2021 installment.
Okay, they've been paid, they have the $6,321.60 then, the new amount?
Well, they've received half of it.
Okay, half, the 3,000-something.
Yes, ma'am.
So they haven't been paid the new amount, correct?
Well, this is all 12%. The 12% went into effect for this school year, so the November half reflected 12% and the June will as well.
Okay, okay, but they have received that, then what would it take? How much would we have to have if we went with the $1,000 instead of the 500? What would we have to come up with? Do you know that-
It would be another 1.4 million, so the total cost would be 2.8 million.
2.8, but we would have to find the one point, another 1.4 to come up with that, and that would, there's no way you could get that out, you could squeeze that out of ESAs, what you're telling me.
No, I looked at every line item in that budget, and because appropriately, we decided that we were going to use that money to fund some supplemental instructional support at our schools, we filled those positions, and that money is not available to us to redirect.
And you've already filled all those positions, you're telling me, all those have already-
We ended up, I think I shared with the board last time that we were at about 80%, and we were validating a couple others, we're at like 98%. So I captured as much of that as I could in being able to fund the 1.4 million that we recommended, but that's really all I could find.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. Adcock?
Yes, I just want to say I really like this presentation. I think it's very open, it's very transparent, and it's got all the information that everybody can look at and see what has been done, and I feel like we've done a great job in that, and being able to give additional bonuses to our teachers is fantastic, so thank you.
Ms. Sandage?
So first off, you came in here and kind of hit the ground running, and I truly appreciate that. It's got to be a lot for you, so I totally appreciate your time and your diligence in understanding our budget. Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. So you answered the one about the supplement and when it's been given, so the November 2021 has already been given, and then we're waiting on this June 2022. Is that the normal payout?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I understand that correctly. And then can we go back to the performance slide where you talked about that?
Which one?
Uh, no.
Sorry, which one?
The performance where you talked about the $3,500. I wanted to see how many of our staff were able to benefit from that.
Oh, I don't have a count, you're talking about the performance bonuses for AP and CTE, and I don't have that, I can get that though, I don't know the number off the top of my head.
Okay, I'm just trying to put together in my head how much money we've given to the staff as a whole and who was able to benefit from it.
I'll get that back out to you all.
Okay, so the other question I have, Ms. Carpenter asked it to some degree about the 1.4 million dollars, we would have to come up with another 1.4, and we're saying that as a district, we couldn't pull that from somewhere else. Did I hear that correctly?
Oh, no, ma'am, I was saying that I had scrubbed all of the ESAR budget line items and didn't feel comfortable that we could appropriately redirect 2.8 million dollars. I feel comfortable we can redirect 1.4 million dollars, but I haven't said that we can't find it elsewhere. I know that we could use fund balance appropriation to fund it, we were just trying to bring to the board a recommendation without going into fund balance, and that's where we landed, at 500. But yeah, I haven't looked at every little bucket of funding, but I did scrub the ESAR funding very, very intently and feel comfortable that we can support 1.4 in redirecting that ESAR money.
And excuse my ignorance, why would we not want to use fund balance for something like this? I just want to understand.
No, no, I understand, totally the board's discretion.
Okay, okay, thank you so much.
Okay, board members, with this being just a report, we can put it back on next week as an agenda item for additional information if y'all need to go through it a little more thoroughly and figure that out for next week, would that be good? All right, so I'll place it on the agenda for next week. Is there anything else that you want? I heard Ms. Sandage is, is there anything else that you would like in this report for next week? Hearing none, okay. Ms. Herndon, are you good for that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great, all right, thank you. All right, Dr. Kapiki?
Yep. Ms. Herndon, I appreciate the detail in your report and the great work you did. Thank you very much. Next, John Basileis with our COVID update.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to review our COVID update with you all. It's going to be really in two parts. The first part deals with our current data. The second part, we'll visit the metrics that the task force subgroup went over at the end of last week, okay? All right, so as we review our current metrics, as you remember, there are four, and you can just sort of see where those are right now. You'll see that the positivity rate is 31.6%. The count of positives in the last two weeks for Cabarrus County is 4,361. Those are very troubling numbers in the red. The same time, they're down significantly from the last time we met. The number of cases, for example, is down over 1,000, and the number of, the positivity rate is down about 7%. On the school metrics, you'll see our positive count in the school of confirmed positive COVID students is 192, and total quarantines is 368. This just tells you where these metrics- This just tells you where these metrics come from. As you can see, this in sort of a graph form. This tells you that there's a fairly significant slope down. You see from the 38% down to the 31%. That's a, if you look at the slope of that sort of gold line, it's coming down rapidly. This just gives you the website that we go to for the state's count of our two-week cases. Again, you'll see that's down about 1,000 cases. This is a graphic representation of what our cases have looked like over time, including the dotted red line to show when we went mask optional for the first time. I think what's of significant interest in this graph for me is that as you look at the green line and the blue line, the green line represents our quarantines and the blue line represents our COVID-positive students. At times, you can see that there's a wide gap between the quarantines and the COVID-positive students. Now you can see that that gap has really closed significantly. Again, this is in table format. I think you all like to see the data in a variety of different ways. And so this just gives you an idea of when we were masked and when we're masked optional, with the masked being in the pink highlights, the yellow being in the sort of split. Again, you can see that ratio column, the third column over from the right, as you look at it, is 1.9 to 1. That means for every one student that is COVID-positive, there's .9 students that are additionally quarantined outside of the positive students. I hope that makes sense. So those are the numbers as we, where we stand currently. Now let's move over to talking about the metrics team. Just a quick reminder, the metrics team first launched, I'm sorry, the task force first launched in December of 2020. And when that occurred, you all made some subgroups. One of those subgroups was metrics. The initial metrics were used for return to in-person learning. Clearly, that's been well-established this year. In late August of 2021, North Carolina made decisions about masking to be determined by local boards such as yourselves. In fall of 2021, our metrics focused on when to change from mask mandated to mask optional and in reverse as well. Our initial metrics were community-based positivity, hospitalization, and total cases. We were asked to revisit those, and then we substituted the hospitalization metric for two school-based metrics, one of them being the total number of quarantines and another being the total number of confirmed positive students. Of course, okay. The challenge, of course, is anytime you have an even number of metrics is where we are today, right? You have a split. You have two in the red and two in the green. You know, with respect to our law enforcement folks here, it's almost like, when you see something like that, it's almost like you're getting a citation for driving too slow and too fast at the exact same time. So the metrics clearly had to be revisited. The last time we brought a set of metrics to you all, you all gave us some feedback. You wanted some clarity on the fifth metric. We proposed a metric that dealt with staff positivity and quarantines. You all wanted us to get a little bit more reductive and clear on that. And there was also some concern that the percentages of students in confirmed positive cases and quarantines seemed low. So what the task force, or rather, the metrics committee of the task force did is we wanted to use existing and confirmed data rather than developing new data points. So here's one of the things that we've talked about about data, and please forgive me if I've said this to you before. Data is a lot like money, right? Everybody would like a little bit more of it to be able to make the decisions the way that they wish to. The question becomes, how hard are you willing to work for that? And so in our circumstance, we really wanted to use existing data rather than burden our staff with even more requirements. We also undertook this task with an idea that mask optional is sort of the default condition in school attendance outside of COVID. Pre-COVID, mask optional was the default condition. So what we decided then was that mask mandating circumstances would be statistical outliers. They would be something that would be outside of what is normative. So as a result, what the committee discussed was treating the, treating our data as though it were normally distributed and then applying basically one standard deviation out as a way of making our determination as to what the metrics should be. So in other words, in order to do that statistically, one standard deviation out is about 34%. So what we did is we simply took the last set of metrics that we presented to you all and multiplied them, for metrics three and four, and multiplied them times 1.34, right? So that you'd have something that was more reflective of something that was atypical rather than typical. Again, thinking that mask mandating would be atypical and not typical. And then we also decided that we would like to use a indicator of staff positives, staff positive confirmed cases. This would free us from any conflated numbers that might occur from influenza-like illnesses or other close contacts, and at the same time would be closely correlated with the number of staff who are out. Again, applying that same 1.34 calculation. And so this is what you'd see. You'd see that the numbers have a breakpoint of about, of 234 for our positive cases, of 815 for our quarantines, and of 41 for our staff positives, all right? So if this metric were adopted today, you'd be in a circumstance where you would have two variables in the red, the two community metrics, and three in the yellow and green combined, all right? So that would tend to lean towards mask optional. This is kind of a graphic representation of what it would look like throughout the year had this, if you all adopt this metric, what that would have looked like throughout the year. Okay, those are all the slides I had prepared. Any questions you all have?
Okay, and I will begin with Ms. Adcock.
Thank you, as always, for this information. It's always really great to look at it. Can you go back one slide, the one that you just showed there? One question I have is, what is the total number of staff that you are using as far as the fifth metric? So when you say number of school staff?
Thank you, right.
Do you know what that magic number is?
You know, I don't know the number. What I can tell you is it's staff that are in schools. So it does not include ed center staff or people who are in the facilities building or the technology building, only for school-based staff members.
Okay. That's really it, that's all I have. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Sure, thank you.
Ms. Carpenter.
And that was my question, because you're saying, well, it says just minus central office. And that's what I was wanting to find out, because they're saying it's 19. And that's why I was wanting to say, what does, who does that 19? What does that consist of? Where are you coming up with that 19?
Sure.
Who does that, who is that making that 19 from?
Sure, those are anyone that's assigned to a school, any staff members who are assigned to schools. So that includes teachers, custodians, principals, counselors, social workers, psychologists, anybody who's assigned to a school, anybody who's not in a, in one of these, one of these non-school facilities that we operate.
Okay, so you're saying for that week only? So the next week, I mean, we could have, I mean, as it stands right now, if we adapted this graph right now, and that number would drop, would go to, I mean, it could fluctuate. That could change the whole perspective on that with the, we have in two in red. If that would go to, well, now, I mean, you're saying it's 19 right now. I mean, that could very well, if it dropped to 22, that would put it in the yellow, right? Two more people could make a difference, right?
Yes, you're right. Whenever you're doing something with an indicator like this, small differences can have a big impact. And when you're doing anything that revolves around metric-based decision-making, there is some degree of fluctuation. In fact, that's very intention. This way, you're able to sort of insulate yourself from some of the negative impacts of a surge in cases, for example.
Okay, well, that was just my main question. But who, you know, I'd like to find out who that, because it says here just minus central staff.
Yes, I understand. We probably?
Mr. Basileis, if I can. That number is, that includes everybody system-wide. So that number is everybody in the entire organization. So that's a system-wide number. And the actual number as of today was, to Mr. Basileis's credit, he only has the information that it was given. I know that it's actually, it's right at 20 right now. So there are 20 employees system-wide that would be confirmed positive. And I get that report every Monday. John just doesn't have the updated information. So that includes everybody.
Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Carpenter?
Now, I know you're not on the metrics, but you're on the task force, right?
Yeah, I'm not on the metrics.
Right, but you?
I was not on the metrics.
Were you on Friday when we had this full discussion? Okay, so did you understand how he came up with those numbers as far?
All they said it was just minus, they didn't go into, who all, they just said it was minus just that. They didn't go into detail.
Do you remember us talking about it would be minus like the facilities and maintenance department or the IT building?
All I heard was it was just the, they didn't go into the great detail.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I can't remember if you were on or not. Okay, okay, great.
May I say one thing, just for the sake of absolute transparency? And I hope when I'm up here, what we're doing is we're instilling a sense of trust and transparency with our community about everything we're doing, especially our data, because numbers are things that sometimes leave people puzzled as to whether they've been dealt with even-handedly. I invite people to check my math. I mean, what happens is every week, there is that, there is a report that's posted and archived, and you could literally count the number of positive cases for the schools for every week, and you would come to that number as well. I'm not above making a mistake. God knows that, absolutely. So if you ever find me to be mistaken about that, please bring it to me. I'll immediately make the correction.
No, and John, for the record, you have been fantastic all the way through this pandemic. I appreciate the work that you've done. I know this board appreciates the work that you've done. And no one is questioning your integrity, your honesty. You've been nothing but transparent and honest, and I appreciate that. So you have nothing to worry about, just continue on. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Blackwell.
So I just want to say, you know, this has been hard work for everybody to do this, and I really appreciate what the task force has done with these metrics. You know, I definitely think that we should adopt this as one of the guidelines that we use in order to decide what we're doing. And, you know, it's, these metrics are really just proving the point that it's time to get these masks off these kids. So that's my thoughts on it. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Mr. Fur.
Yeah, John, I like you, but you know, I'm tired of hearing you, tired of looking at you.
I get that a lot.
I'm just kidding. But, you know, I just basically got three words, enough is enough.
Mr. Walter.
Okay, so the numbers that we're talking about in these, in this new updated metrics, that's all available online for people to see? So that number of staff, that's all on there, it's not?
Yes, the number of staff who are positive, COVID-positive at their schools, week by week, that's available in the archived report.
Okay, and that's the one that had over 200 teachers or staff a couple of weeks ago? Over 200 of them had COVID at the time, so now we're down to 20?
Yeah, let me?
Sorry, 116, sorry.
Yeah, so that is?
Mixing up your quarantines and your?
Right, right, right. So we opted not to go with quarantines as an indicator, but rather we went with just the positives, because that's something that we felt ironclad solid about.
Okay, and I do like the fact that we have five metrics now and not just the four. I think it's clear and it's understandable. And I think we ought to adopt it as well to make it clear for everybody so that we don't have to keep guessing on what the board's going to do.
Mr. Walter, if I can say one more thing?
Yes.
It's related to the task force. So anytime you get a group like of that, like that together, there's a lot of smart, strong-willed, determined people on that that represent a variety of different viewpoints. I would be misleading you if I said we had absolute, complete, and total consensus on it. That everybody said we all agree this is 100% the very best thing we can do. What we arrived at was a general consensus among the overwhelming majority of the group who said this seems to be the best way forward. So I don't, I just don't want to give you the wrong idea that everybody?
No, that's very much like our board.
Well, and it's not a dissimilar process. I mean, it's hard to get that many people to agree on much of anything. But it was an experience where I think everybody should have felt heard and respected and talked to in a way that met them where they were.
Well, I appreciate the time everybody put in to come up with the thing. Sure.
Ms. Sandage.
Thank you, as always, for the time that you've put into this and presenting to us. I know we probably give you heck every time you have to go through this with our questions, but it's definitely appreciated. Also, just want to say kudos to the task force for coming up with something that at least everybody can come to the middle and agree on. So I just appreciate that. And for once, I don't have any questions.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And of course, the same with me, with me being a part of the task force. And I get to hear this firsthand, and it is a lot of great discussion, a lot of good feedback. We have really great people with expertise on that task force, and they bring a lot to the discussion and to the process. And, you know, I just want to say, the, number one, this is not today's updated information, right?
The bottom numbers are today's information. The 192, 192 cases, 368 quarantines of students and 19 staff, that is this week's data.
Okay, so the state was, had reflected a positivity rate at 25?
So I think that the, we get our data from the Health Alliance, and I just think there's a little bit of lag in time on that. I think the next time that updates, it'll come down, the slope will probably be even more aggressively downward.
So we will probably see that next week. I wasn't on that call this morning, so that's why I just wanted to make sure when I checked it, I saw the 25. So I just want to make sure.
I think you'll see it drop even further. Dr. Kigge, do you have additional information on that?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. All right, board members, so what is the pleasure? Do we want to put the new additional metric on for next week to adopt that as a guide as well?
Do we have to make a decision today? Otherwise, your requirement drops.
Not with the metric. We will have to vote for sure, because we have to vote tonight. Ms. Carpenter's motion expires today. So we have to vote, but we don't have to do anything with the metric tonight. We could do that next week.
But we can use metric, can't we?
We can do whatever the board's pleasure is.
I think we should adopt the, I mean, I would say adopt the metric.
As a guide?
John, please put the metric up.
Mr. Fur. I thought you keyed up.
Hold on, ma'am, I did.
Okay, so the pleasure of the board. Ms. Blackwell, did you put, did you start with a motion or did you just make that a recommendation?
I just made a recommendation, but I can certainly make a motion if you want to do that. Now, are we making a motion on these metrics or whether we're going to go optional mask?
No, the votes for mask is separate. This will be just on the metric as a guide.
All right, well, then I make a motion that we adopt this metric as one guideline that we use in order to make our decision on masks.
I will second that.
So I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, second by Ms. Carpenter. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? So we have a 6-1.
Yeah, and I'm gonna, here's my reason. You know, I appreciate the work everyone's put into the metric. I haven't voted for the metric before. And until we got parents' choice on that metric, I can't do it.
All right, motion passes 6-1. All right, now let's, is there anything else that the board would like for next week regarding this except for the updated information? Hearing none, I will move that to the agenda with just an updated report.
Thank you, Mr. Basileis.
Okay, now we will move to 10.02, since we amended the agenda, which is our discussion on the vote tonight for the expiration of Ms. Carpenter's mask mandate vote two weeks ago. So I will open the floor for discussion, and I will begin with Ms. Sandage. Do you want to put a motion on the floor?
No, no, I don't want to go first. I thought Rob was going to make that motion, and I was going to slap him by that chair.
That's okay.
Because it belongs to him.
Careful, careful, I'm glad you're not keyed up, okay. Okay. So, Mr. Walter, did you-
Yeah, I have a question. I mean, I did-
Thank you.
So if we don't do anything, the mask mandate drops at 12:00 PM, or 12:00 AM tomorrow? Are we, is there a recommendation from the superintendent? Is it?
Mr. White, I, I know this probably needs to be explained once again.
The motion that was made by Mrs. Carpenter at the last meeting was to go mask mandatory until today. So if not, if it just expires naturally, then we go back to no masks or mask optional.
Okay. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
I would recommend that you use the metric as your guideline. I think the task force put a lot of effort and time into that. That was the purpose of them being together, and I think there's good information that we're providing the board with on a consistent basis to use that as one of your guidelines. I think there's always going to be discussion around this particular topic until we move on past COVID. But right now, I'm comfortable with using the guidelines. Again, as one of the met, as one of the options, I think there's always time and, and, and there's openness for discussion. But I'm comfortable with using that metric.
Okay, board members. So are we going to put a motion on the floor, or are we going to just let Ms. Carpenter's motion expire?
I'd like to put a motion on the floor. I'll put a motion on the floor to make mask optional starting tomorrow.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Mr. Furr. Do I have any discussion?
I just wanted to see if there was any possibility that we can amend that, or you'd be willing to amend it. And then Dr. Kapiky, is tomorrow soon enough? I just want to make sure.
We can put all communication if the board changes direction. That will not be difficult.
Okay. And I just wanted to see, there is currently, and just, I just, I guess, make sure, we can't have visitors in the school? So if we unmask kids, can we have a discussion about allowing visitors in case of quarantines and et cetera, et cetera? Maybe folks are willing to help out in the schools? I, I hope that made sense, because you're looking at me like I got two heads.
No, not at all. It makes perfect sense. What I would, what I would ask the board tonight respectfully is to, to vote on the masking or masking optional agenda item first, and then if we can have some discussion, or if you could indicate to me in more detail as to what you're looking for, I could, I could discuss that with the cabinet and principals. I don't want to throw all of that on them tomorrow. I'd rather have some time to, to, to discuss that through. But we are, we are definitely moving in the direction where we do, we would like to have more volunteers and parents back into the schools. We do, I do agree with that.
Okay. Since we meet next week, can you give us an update on that next week? Is that possible?
I can. And, and if on February 14th, I can inform and then update the board as to how we're handling visitors and parents and people into the buildings. But again, with respect to administrators, I would just like to run that by them first.
And just so I understand, that doesn't have to be decided by this board? Is that what I hear you saying?
It does not.
Okay. I just want-
I have a question for Jay. Okay, so if we did nothing, we'd start the vote next week on the mask mandate? If we vote today, is that good for the month? Is that how that works?
Statute says that you're supposed to bring it up for discussion, and I believe for a vote every month. So if you do not make any vote tonight, you do have to vote next week. You have to vote sometime in February.
Okay. So if we vote today, it's good for the month?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other comments or questions before I put the motion back on the floor for a vote? Okay, the motion by Ms. Blackwell, the second by Mr. Furr. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Ms. Carpenter, I would like a raise of the hands. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And opposed, I'm assuming is Ms. Carpenter. Okay, thank you.
And, and, uh-uh, uh-uh. And the only reason I would say that the metrics are saying yes, and the only reason I would say that, I'd really like to see our percentage rate. It is going down, which I'm all for. I think it's great. It's at, by the state you had mentioned, I just looked, it's 28% by that, even though the Health Department's still showing it at 31, which is great. I'd really like, next week it may be even lower, which at that time I would say, yes, let's go. The metric looks great. Again, if we could have the vote next week, that would be wonderful, but y'all want to go ahead and have it tonight?
We, we just voted. It just passed, and we do, by the mandate by Governor Cooper, it's for every 30 days, so we will not have this back on until March.
But, I mean, if it could be next week, then I could probably, you probably could get it unanimous, what I'm saying, but you won't, you know, it's, it's not.
But your, it was your motion that expired today, so.
I know, but what I'm saying is, one more week could make a difference. But that's what I'm saying.
It's, it's passed.
But that's why I want that explained.
Okay, great.
But we are going in the right direction. I'm glad of that, and that's why I'm making this statement. And we are going in the right direction at this time, but that's why I wanted to make that statement.
Okay. Thank you.
And so that's why I'm making that. But we are going in the right direction, so thank you very much, manager.
Absolutely. Okay. We are going to move backwards to 7.01, to the board, uh, chair comments. And if everyone will give me just a minute. So I want to remind especially the board members and the staff that we have our planning session scheduled for Saturday, March the 5th. It's an all-day, beginning at four, excuse me, 8 until 4. We, that day, we will be getting several presentations by Dr. Kapiky and the staff. We need to start looking at our legislative agenda. And once we comprise that agenda, we need to schedule a meeting with our legislative representatives. So I also want you to look at some timeframes after that, so that we can start looking at some dates to send to them to get a meeting with those representatives and take a look at our legislative agenda. Also, I'm, and actually, Vice Chair Blackwell and I attended a meeting that we were part of with some of the district chair and vice chairs, and we have talked about maybe doing a collective legislative agenda for the district. So any ideas that you have, I'm going to be speaking with Dr. Kapiky about updating the latest that come down from the North Carolina School Board Association, and then we all need to take a look at that ourselves. I'm sure we're all going to hit the same topics, but if you have anything else additional, just make sure you get it to me. Okay? With that, you have a copy of the liaison and the committees that I put at your seat, and there is one correction. If you will make sure that it is noted that the literature and, and excuse me, I'll take this off. Yes. I'm sorry. Yes, okay. Okay, absolutely. Yes. So Dr. Kapiky has reminded me that in our motion for the mask optional to take place beginning tomorrow, that of course, the state mandate that the children still wear, students still wear, they mask on the buses, have to stand. So we probably should have placed that in there, but just as a noted, because it's a, it's a given at the state level. But that does not include, mask optional does not include the buses. They will remain mask mandate. And going back to liaisons and committees, all of you have a copy, the literature and supplemental materials. Those two names have switched. So literature and supplemental materials, steering committee will be Ms. Blackwell, Ms. Adcock, and Ms. Carpenter. And the student services steering committee will be Ms. Sandage and myself. Ms. Carpenter?
I guess. I, if you, if it's okay with board, I would like to be an alternate on the, um, let's see, which one was that? Oh, the child protection and fatality team as an alternate, if that's okay with the board.
Noted. I don't think anyone would have any objections. Okay. I'll list you as a third alternate. Great. Okay. With that, I know that all of you know that I sit on the Institute State Fellows Program, which it took a look at K-12 education this past year, and how they are going to address the learning loss and just K-12 education as a whole in the different areas. I'm just going to read you, as my committee report, what we're looking at, because actually Cabarrus County fared much better in this report. It just says the learning loss, also referred to as unfinished learning, refers to any loss of knowledge, skills, or academic progress due to extended gaps or disruptions to student learning. Nationwide, school disruptions due to the COVID-19 pandemic impacted the education of millions of students, as many students experienced inadequate access to distance learning, and educators find growing evidence of large disparities by race and income. The McKinsey estimates, I'll send that out to, to you, but you can Google it, that U.S. students lost anywhere between three months to a year of learning, depending on the quality of the remote learning. Nonetheless, it will be years before the extent of learning loss experienced by students as a result of COVID-19 can be definitively, definitively determined. As schools continue to tackle learning inequities exacerbated by the pandemic, there are opportunities to identify and utilize evidence-based practices to provide equitable access to innovative learning opportunities. So in some of this, it found that third, in the K-12 grades, that among third through eighth graders, there was an 11% average decrease in students' reading proficiency, and a 19% average decrease in students' reading math proficiency between 2018 to 19 and 2020 to 21. The proficiency data, which I will get out to you, I'm just going to kind of briefly, just for the general public, and I will give you the completed report. The chart is going to show that we did fare better than the North Carolina state as a whole. In reading, which the state came in at 45.5%, Cabarrus County came in at 53.2. In math, the state was 40, and Cabarrus County Schools was 52.5. So in some of these reports, you know, even though we know we're looking at a real learning loss, no matter where you are, Cabarrus County did fare better, and I think that says a lot for Dr. Kapiky, our past administration, and our teachers as a whole. So we look forward to getting that complete document, and I'll get that out to you guys, so you can be looking at it for this next week. Okay? And with that, I would like to move to 8.01, which are our committee reports. And I'll begin with Ms. Sandage. Any committee reports that you have tonight?
I don't have any.
Mr. Walter?
Uh, we didn't meet.
No ma'am.
Ms. Blackwell?
No ma'am.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes. I have one. On Monday, December the 20th, the District CNI Committee and the teachers from Concord Middle visited the Junior Achievement of Central Carolinas to tour the facility and learn about their program. As part of the CCS Career Consortium, we, we will partner with Junior Achievement to engage students in the kindergarten through 12th grade in financial literacy and career readiness instruction. Four schools will be participating in the pilot. Irvin Elementary, Concord Middle, Concord High, and Cabarrus Technical, Technical Early College. Programming is as followed. Elementary, Junior Achievement ourselves, Junior Achievement in a Day Program, Junior Achievement ourselves introduce students to financial literacy, including personal economics and the choice people make to meet their needs and wants. Students from Concord High will serve as Junior Achievement heroes and teach lessons to students at Irvin Elementary. Middle School, sixth grader students will participate in Junior Achievement BizTown. Students will learn about financial literacy, community and economics, work with career readiness, and business management. The, the project with a hands-on simulation at Junior Achievement, where they become citizens of BizTown and run their businesses, receive paychecks, make bank transactions, go shopping, with Charlotte area businesses are represented throughout BizTown. Eighth grade students will build a foundation for making intelligent, lifelong, personal financial decisions. The program includes hand-owned, in-school activities in a visit to Junior Achievement Financial Park. Charlotte-based businesses are represented in the Financial Park. By the end of the program, students will be able to identify personal interests, skills, work, evaluate the risks and benefits of savings and investment, define taxes, and explain their purpose, and understand how they affect everyone, explain the advantages and disadvantages of using credit cards and debit cards. Now, that's a good one. And create a successful budget and, and hypothetical, hypothetical life situations. High School, Junior Achievement Personal Finance will be used in our high schools with the new economic and personal finance courses. This program introduced high school students to the interact, interactions in today's finance, discussions, and future finance freedoms. To achieve financial wellness, students learn about money management, including earning, employment incomes, budgeting, savings, credit, and debit, consumer protection, risk management, investment, and net, net worth. They also explore how their decisions can affect other people and whom they have relationships and healthy behavior to discuss and manage financial decisions. At the conclusion of this program, students will identify how their personal finance affect the quality of life. They will understand how their financial choices will be the basis for meeting their needs and wants. We want to thank Kimberly Baker, Senior Vice President of Junior Achievement, for partnering with Cabarrus County Schools. If, please email or call if you have any questions or, or want to ask any questions. And we want to thank everyone for your continued support. This is an amazing opportunity for our students and our community. They deserve it, and I want to thank everybody that helped us go see this. This was a wonderful, wonderful opportunity, and it was, it was, that, that is just a wonderful, wonderful facility.
Great. Thank you.
Mrs. Grimsen.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter, for that very detailed report. I think it would also be remiss if we didn't acknowledge and recognize Dr. Hill for her leadership in establishing that partnership with Junior Achievement. So Dr. Hill, I do appreciate all the work you're doing with our elementary, middle, high school students, and work with Mrs. Baker in keeping that partnership alive and vibrant in our, in our school system. So thank you.
Ms. Adcock, anything tonight or next week?
Yes. So the board interns will be here for next week, and they'll be presenting a presentation on a service project that they're doing in the school system. So it'll be really exciting to get that.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Mr. Furr? I think you had a question?
Yeah, I had a question. I probably should have asked it earlier, but since our neighbors, Union County, are going away with the contact tracing, and I was wondering if we can address that? Is there any, do we have any grounds to do what they've done?
Mr. White, are you prepared to?
In regards to contact tracing and the like, what our neighbors in Union County have done, they've talked about contract, contact tracing, and they've also talked about quarantining. And we don't have the authority to stop it ourselves. It's not being done in our school system in regards to the schools. It's being done through the school nurses, who are employees of the Health Alliance. What this board can do is encourage the Health Alliance maybe not to contact trace or not to quarantine healthy children. And if that's something the board would like me to look into, to, to draft a resolution or talk about some language that, what we can legally do, or what y'all can legally do, I can certainly work on that.
Okay. I will open up the floor for discussion, and I will begin with Ms. Sandage.
I mean, you just answered the question, it sounds like, to me. The question was asked about the Union County resolution and what we have authority to do as it relates to that, and you answered that we truly don't have the authority, because the school nurses are in our schools, and they are employed by the Health Department. So they would be the ones doing the, the contact tracing.
They're the ones that are doing the contact tracing and doing the quarantining. This board can, can go a step further and say, based upon the information we have, we would ask that you, you know, whatever that, whatever that position would be, is not to test healthy children, or not to quarantine healthy children, not to contact trace healthy or not to quarantine healthy children, not to contact trace healthy children, that kind of thing, if that's what this board wants to do. Encourage them not to do it.
What would that be like, a letter drafted to them to say, hey, please don't? I mean, what would that look like?
It would be a resolution that this board stands behind the position that if you have a healthy child, that why are we doing contact, why is contract tracing taking place? Why is quarantining taking place on a healthy child, based upon the new regulations that I believe the quarantine period is down to five days? So this board could take a stand by saying, Health Alliance, recognize those, where you are, and what is the benefit, and why are we, why are you contact tracing, and why are you quarantining healthy children? So that's what this board can do.
So, for example, if we've got someone who tested positive, and the folks that were around them are not feeling sick, are we saying not to test those folks? Is that what you, is that what it's suggesting?
That's what y'all would be discussing tonight, is.
Gotcha.
What do you want, when you're sort of, what's the idea about the resolution? I could draft a resolution for you, and then that could be discussed next week. I certainly don't feel comfortable trying to come off with it, come up with that language off the top of my head.
Gotcha, okay. So, but we do understand that children can be asymptomatic and not show any signs but still have COVID. I just wanted to put that out there. You don't have to answer that question. Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Mr. Walter?
I think that's a good discussion, and the next time our Health Department folks come and talk to us.
I'm going to go. I do, I do. Ms. Blackwell?
You know, I feel the same way as you, Tim, so I think it's time to get past this. Jay, I would love for you to draft some kind of resolution so that we can really put it to paper, our stance on this, so thank you for offering that, and maybe we can talk about that next week. So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Carpenter?
Well, one of the things is, it isn't our authority. It is the Health Alliance. This board talks about how they're worried about learning loss, which learning is what we're supposed to be worried about. And to me, we said we wanted to put all this stuff behind us, let's worry about that. And personally, it's not our, it's out of our ballpark. And personally, is that in the toolbox? What's it say in the state toolbox? And was that not what they were threatened to be sued about? Is that not correct, Union County?
You've used a lot of.
Is that not correct?
You've used a lot of pronouns with me, so let me make certain I'm on the same page as you. They used the toolbox, and they got in trouble. I'm assuming you're talking about Union County. Union County, as from what I understood, ended up saying that they were not going to quarantine, they were not going to, or they were not going to quarantine. And that's when the state got upset with them, saying it's not your role, school system, to quarantine or not. That is for the Health Alliance to make that decision. So what I am hearing from the majority of the members tonight is to not say, Health Alliance, you can do whatever you want to do, but we're urging you, why are you going to quarantine? Why are you going to contact trace healthy children? That's the difference. So that if that, if this board adopts a resolution in that kind of vein, it's not contrary to the law. It's just, help us understand, or you should not be doing contact tracing, you should not be doing quarantining of healthy children. And what Mrs. Sandage said is potentially asymptomatic. So I'll come back with some language that you can look at and make a decision if that's what, if that's something you're comfortable with adopting or recommending.
But it isn't our job, is it? I mean, we're supposed to be out, that's the Health Alliance's job.
It is, and I would tell you that from a legal standpoint, is that you're somewhat the client, and you can ask, why are we doing this? Help us understand that.
But it isn't our job, is it?
It is not your job to quarantine or to contact trace, that's correct.
Absolutely. So, our job is to educate.
Yes, ma'am.
Evidently, our job is to keep kids with a mask on.
Might I make a statement?
Yes.
Chairman, it might not be our job, but what it is, is that we are the ones who are going to have to tackle this learning loss and the children that are having to quarantine at home unnecessarily. When we look at this data, and it shows how many of these quarantines are actually testing positive, it's usually only 2% to 3%. So you have all those children that are now at home who are not learning, and we're the ones that are going to have to figure that out.
That's, that's not what we saw on that last slide.
Okay, I'm going to call the discussion, so, because it's really not an agenda item for tonight. So let's give, by consensus, Ms. Adcock, unless you have something, since I didn't get to you. Okay, go ahead. And then, I'm just going to call the discussion and just, by consensus, give Jay the authority to come up with a resolution draft for next week.
Yeah, I would just, Mr. White, I would just like to say, in that resolution, that they also, the Board of Education, is with their county commissioners, and they are together in that decision, and that's something that I would like to pursue to see if our county commissioners would join us in this.
Okay, Mr. Farr?
Yeah, I just want to add something. I think Union County, they have the school board, commissioners, and the Health Department all on the same page. And all we're asking, basically, can we get on the same page? And then maybe we can keep kids in school that shouldn't be at home. I mean, that's all this is. We're not telling them what to do, we're just trying to work together and keep kids learning.
So, Dr. Kapiki, I know you might want to speak to that, because I guess this will also address the test to stay and the mask mandate requirement by the Health Alliance. Back on that mask optional.
Yeah, so right now, when you go, as the board has voted to go mask optional, we are not in a test-to-stay program because the positivity rate is above the request number of 15% or lower. In 1,000 cases, over 14 days or lower to be in the ABC collaborative test-to-stay program. So currently, right now, we are not in a test-to-stay program based on the board's vote this evening. However, when you do look at the data, and you'll get the amount of quarantines that we've been tracking over time since August of 2021, we are showing, and I'm generalizing because I don't have the data right in front of me, but it was just up a while back, and we see it every week, of those students quarantined, roughly 3% to 5% of them turned positive. So most of the kids that are being quarantined are not turning positive based on the data that we have. So that would be what I would say on that.
Okay, thank you. So, by consensus, are we good for Jay to draft something for us to look at next week? Is all good?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Can I invite the Health Department back to the table to talk about it?
Please not.
I think maybe we need to wait until we have something and have a little bit more discussion.
I'm still a little confused on why we need to, can I speak?
Yes, Ms. Sandage?
I'm still a little confused on why we need a resolution to the Health Department. So I'm not saying that I'm not giving you the okay, so if there's a vote, my vote would be no.
Okay.
If I speak that way, I think we're doing something that's, we don't need to.
Okay, so let's just do this, because it's the full board that will need to make that decision. Jay, if you want to go ahead and just draft something that would give us something, a rough draft, that what we can look at, and maybe get it out to the board this week to be looking at, and then we can put it on the agenda for next week?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and the board can either vote it up or vote it down, okay? Is that good with everybody? Okay, all right. Thank you. And I forgot to say thank you to our SROs that are with us tonight. We appreciate you always being in the building here, and I always forget to do that, so my apologies. We appreciate you always being at our meetings. Next, I'm going to move to 8.02. I'll ask Mr. Vogel to step to the podium. I think he has a report from the attorneys.
Thank you. I have a report to the board on the status of the board's request of the National School Board Association for a refund of the annual dues that the board paid to the National School Board Association last year. By way of background, this past November, I reported to the board regarding the National School Board Association's letter to President Biden that characterized parents' interactions at school board meetings as domestic terrorism and potential hate crimes. The board asked me to draft a letter for the board chair's signature requesting a refund of annual dues that were paid to the National School Board Association by the board to participate in the NSBA's National Connections Program. That annual dues payment by the board last summer, for the time period July 1st of last year through June 30th of this year, was $8,620. I am pleased to report to you that in the last few days, we were contacted by the National School Board Association, and they are providing the school board a prorated refund of your annual due payment. That is, you will be receiving a refund in the next week or so of $5,028.33. That is, that correlates to seven out of the 12 months of your dues payment, being that we gave the notice in mid-November of our rescission from the National School Board Association. That makes, that makes perfect sense. So you're receiving a refund of 58% of the annual dues that you paid last year. Again, a total of $5,028.33 is being refunded to you.
Well, that is good news. Any questions for Jonathan?
If you cannot review that, if.
Hang on. Ms. Sandage?
Now, where is that $5,000 going?
It is going to you, the school board.
Is there, is there a budget line item where that's going?
I will leave that to the financial officer.
That would be my question.
Okay, actually, that'll go back. Ms. Herndon will be addressing that with the Budget Committee, and I think, Ms. Sandage, you're on the Budget Committee, correct? So you probably will know that quicker than we will. Thank you. Ms. Carpenter?
I just want to make sure that we don't automatically just repay them again. So, Ms. Budget, Ms. Chairman, make sure that they just don't automatically shoot them another check so we don't have to, we think long and hard before we pay them again.
Dooley noted.
Make them, make them think long and hard before we do that again, okay?
All right, thank you. All right. Is that it?
That's it.
For your report?
Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes reports and discussion items. We will move to 9.01. These are the items that will be considered for consent or action for our business meeting. We will begin with 9.01, which is the Concord Middle School Parking Lot Replacement Project. We'll have Mr. Chuck Taylor to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, board. Dr. Kapiki, I got a big smile on my face tonight because I have the easiest thing for you to consider and the most pleasurable. And in the eight years I've been here, this is the unique position to actually have everything I need. I don't get to say that very often. So last year, the top 36 was funded, the county provided the monies. We're looking at a ballpark of around 347K to redo the parking lot at Concord Middle School. To my knowledge, it is the first parking lot replacement this school system has done. With that, I'm asking for your consent and approval. Do you have any questions?
Okay, board members, I'll begin with Ms. Adcock.
I have got a smile on my face as well, and I am glad you're happy.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Carpenter?
And I got a smile on my face, too. It was, and it was below, it was below budget, wasn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
And that makes it even a bigger smile.
It sure does.
Ms. Blackwell?
Yeah, that parking lot's terrible, so thank you. I'm glad you're replacing it.
I think almost everyone up here has either had a phone call or an email session with me about parking lots, and probably Concord Middle.
Mr. Farr?
No questions.
Mr. Walter?
So we approved this project, how long does it take? Is it during the school year, during the summer? How are you going to do that?
Well, we'll get started on it in the spring, sir. We got it all bid out, we got it engineered. It probably will not be finished by the end of fiscal year, but by the end of summer, we hope to have it finished.
So you'll do it during the summertime when the kids are out of school?
It will be partly through the year and partly into summertime. We will take advantage of spring break, is what I'm saying.
Okay, so we're not disrupting operations as a school?
As minimal as possible.
Okay. Any other parking lots on this list? Is this the first one you're bringing to us?
This one is. We are expecting to get some additional funding on a larger scale through the CIP list, but that has not been approved yet.
Okay, but this is one of 36 projects, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir. The 25 to 4,000, or 499,000 list.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sandage?
You have made it again, not another question from me.
Thank you very much. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. So I'm assuming all are good for the consent agenda for next week? Okay. We will move to 9.02, Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund Grant by Mr. Brian Cohen, who will join us at the podium.
Good evening, members of the board. The Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund was established in 2017 to assist low-wealth counties with their critical public school building capital needs. Session Law 2021 last year revised the eligibility criteria to include counties like Cabarrus. This provides, they provide an adjusted market value now of taxable real property of less than $40 billion. Grant funds must be used for the construction of new school buildings or additions, repairs, or renovations. Funds cannot be used for real property acquisition or the capital improvement of administrative buildings. In partnership with Cabarrus County, it was agreed by both of us, the school district, to submit an application on behalf of the Northwest Cabarrus High School Replacement Project, which is currently funded for fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '24 on the Capital Improvement Plan. The cost of the school is estimated to come in at well over $102 million. The maximum grant award from the state could be $50 million and requires a local match of 25% by Cabarrus County. A fall grant award could possibly accelerate the opening of this school from 2026 to 2025. Applications for this grant are due March 15th of 2022, with the award announcement being expected in mid-April. This grant has to be signed by both the chairman of the Board of Education and the chair of the county commissioners. And that is all I have, and I'll try to answer any questions you may have about it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sandage, I'll start on your end this time.
I understand, we're trying to get some money and hope we can get it to do some work in our, in our district.
That is correct.
I understand that correctly. All right, thank you.
Mr. Walter?
Who was on your committee that decided this is the top project?
So, the Cabarrus County approached us and asked if we would consider the application on behalf of the Northwest Project, kind of the biggest, going to be the biggest ask in the next two years. So the county requested that we make this application.
So we get the grant, they don't have to come up with the 50 million, is that what we're saying?
That is right, yeah, it comes from, it comes from the Department of Public Instruction. There's, there's $395 million earmarked in the grant award program for this fiscal year.
Okay, well, because of the amount, I'd like to see it on action. Thanks.
Mr. Farr?
No questions.
Ms. Blackwell?
No questions, thank you.
Go for it.
Ms. Adcock? Just find some more of that, 50 more million dollars would be great if you could turn a rock up and it'll be there.
We'll do our best.
Okay, consent or action? I heard. Okay, all good for? Thank you.
And so, logistically, the county requested that I have you sign this first, and then I'll take it to them for Mr. Morris' signatures, and they'll take care of processing the application to the state.
So is next Monday?
It should be fine. We're still well before the deadline, so I'll just, I'll let the county know.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. So that will be placed on the action agenda for Monday night. Okay, we will move to 9.03, the request to the Cabarrus County for contingency funds, and I will keep you.
Yes.
Yes.
So, so this agenda item has changed slightly as of information I received at the county commissioners' work session this evening. Originally, I was going to come and ask for permission to go before the commissioners and request the use of budgeted contingency funds for additional money needed on the road improvements at Roberta Road. It was brought to my attention this evening at about 5:30, that the county, instead of using contingency money within the contract already approved, they were going to use cash on hand to fund that amount, and then on the return of the reimbursement, pay that back off. So I don't really know that there's any action now that needs to be performed because they're doing it internally.
Oh, well, that's really good news.
That's what I felt, too. And I apologize for not bringing this to you before, but at about 5:35, when I got an email from Mr. Harris at the county, he explained that to me, because I emailed him after we left the county meeting, and I said, that's not what I thought we were doing, so.
Okay. So probably just now, due process, we can put it on the consent agenda and be good with it. Okay, is everyone okay with that?
We're not asking for you to use the funds, right?
So we will be using the funds, but again, all these, all these costs associated with road improvement projects are fully reimbursable by either the North Carolina Department of Transportation or the City of Concord, whichever entity requires it.
Right, but the ask, they're going to be generous enough and use their cash on hand to pay for that, so we don't have to make the ask.
That is correct.
At all, so there's no consent agenda.
Yeah, really, I don't believe there's any action required. I would probably want to talk to one of our councils just to confirm that.
That would be great, but since it's been on our agenda to do something with it, I would like to make sure we handle it correctly.
That would be fine, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Carpenter?
Real quick, you know, because this was something that was kind of new, getting all these reimbursements at 100%.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, that hadn't been happening. You know, that hadn't been happening. Have we gotten the reimbursements on all the road improvements we did over at the school in Harrisburg, the elementary?
We have, yes, ma'am. We've received both reimbursements for the Hickory Ridge Road Improvements and for the Weddington Road Improvements. We are awaiting some documents on behalf of the City of Concord to sign for their portion of Weddington Road, and there will be a hundred percent reimbursed on that one as well.
Oh, good. I, I just wondered how that had worked out because, you know, all that had not happened before. So that's good to hear that that has worked out. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Board. Now, we will move to nine point zero four. Policies for Approval on Second Read. We will have Mrs. Burns to the podium. And if you are okay, I will do just like we normally do. I will read down through and ask for any comments or questions. How about that?
Sure.
Okay. So we will begin with policy number twenty-one twenty-five dash seventy-three fifteen. Confidential Information, thirty-one hundred. Curriculum Development, forty fifty. Children of Military Families, fifty twenty-two. Registered Sex Offenders, sixty-three twenty. Use of Student Transportation Services, sixty-three forty. Transportation Service Vehicle Contracts, and nine thousand. Planning to Address Facility Needs. Any comments or questions, Board members? I know you've had this information ahead of time. Mr. Walter.
Yeah, I have a question. How about fifty point two?
Yes?
You know, we are a county that has ESROs in every one of our schools. And I don't see any mention here of even notifying yet the ESRO that one of these individuals is coming on campus. I think that ought to be mandatory, at least to put in this, this policy. And then the other question had to do with, I guess, page three out of four. Item C, that says we have to have a staff member that are going to escort the individual at all times. Is that person trained? Is there a training that needs to occur? Does it just pick, does it pick anybody? Who is that staff member?
Dr. Witherspoon?
So I think those things need to be identified in this policy.
All right. I got it.
Corrective, okay.
In most cases, that would be the administration or the principal. Well, we can, we can review that. I'll talk with Mr. Volker. We can review that policy and take a look at it again.
Next one I had a question on was sixty-three forty, and that has to do with Transportation Services and Vehicle Contracts. And we have a clause that says, "The superintendent shall ensure that the school system contracts for commercial bus transportation services for school-related activities only with entities on an approved list." We don't define approved list. We don't say how you get on the approved list. We don't say anything about what is the approved list. Should, we need to say something about that. It just leads to confusion.
So I believe that is done through finance, the Finance Department? And that the administrators are the ones that, for those who are doing the trips? Is that what you're talking about?
It just, it just needs to be defined. I mean, it's left open-ended.
Pardon? I'm not sure.
There's a state, there's a list that's a front that's on the website that they choose from.
Okay. Yeah, there's a list on the website that they choose from.
Fine. Let's say it's on the website or put a reference to it. Again, we could, we could take this back to Mr. Volker and review the language and make sure that we're legally compliant, so thank you.
Okay. And then, and the last one I had a question with was nine thousand. So we have a long-range plan, and we have a capital plan, and I guess today we're talking about the capital plan. Is that right? Where is the long-range plan? I just see a lot of inconsistencies with what we're doing. Our, our titles for these things don't match up to what we're being presented. Anyway, I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Mr. Walter, I was only bringing the PLS updates for these policies, so I don't have those answers for you.
Okay. Again, I'm just asking questions. That's all I have.
Okay. So I'm hearing that we probably need to pull policy nine thousand, sixty-three forty, and fifty twenty, fifty twenty-two for action next week to address those questions, and then the rest that we can place on the consent agenda. Are all okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Grimsley, is it all right if I get some answers to you all in the, before next week?
That would be great.
All right, thanks.
All right. Moving to nine point zero five. Adopt Budget Resolution 2021, 2022. And we will have Mrs. Carol Herndon back to the podium.
Hello again, Board. This resolution does relate to the school year that we're currently in, 2021, 2022. We are already in our eighth month of this fiscal year, so this is a bit of a formality, if you will, but I do want to take the time to walk you through our initial budget resolution as it relates to supporting our school district for 2021, 2022. As you all know, we are now putting a lot of our energy towards developing the budget for 2022, 2023, and I just wanted you all to know that it is my intention that going forward, that this initial budget resolution would come to the Board in the August, September timeframe each year. Sometimes that's challenging when the state doesn't have an approved budget like we didn't have until very late in the game for this current school year. But even then, I believe personally that we need to put our best foot forward and bring to the Board a budget resolution much earlier in the year. So my intention would be that we would share this with you in the August, September timeframe each year. But it is what it is for this year, and the late approval of the state budget did complicate things terribly, but I do want to acknowledge that we're well into this fiscal year, and I'm sharing this initial budget resolution with you for the first time. So I am not going to walk through this detailed document line by line. I think if you've been a Board member before, you're familiar with it. And basically, I am presenting a budget for the full year that totals almost four hundred and thirty-four million dollars. And in this document that's now portrayed, each section summarizes that by fund. What we receive locally, what we receive from our state, what we receive from a capital outlay perspective, funding for school nutrition, and all the different funding buckets that we receive. So if you look at this just for a second, you'll see we've got listed initially in each section, and this first section is all about our local budget. And the first part of that summarizes how we are budgeting to spend our local funding. And so you'll see it broken out between instructional services, supporting services from the district office perspective. And there's lots of pages of detail underneath this. This is summarized to this level so that the Board can see our intentions around how we're going to use our funding across the different buckets that we receive. And then you'll notice right at the end of Section One, where we outline all of our expenditures, we see the revenues that will cover those expenditures, and the two have to match, right? We can't budget to spend more than we expect to receive. So that's important as you look through this document, that our expectations around budgeted expenditures have to equal our anticipated revenues. And so you'll see from a local perspective, which is always the case historically here at CCS and across the state, there is a provision for a fund balance appropriation, three point two million dollars, and I'm going to talk about that in detail in just a little bit, if you'll hang there for just a second. That doesn't always materialize. Sometimes we do have to use fund balance in order to cover all of our expenditures. Sometimes we actually have our revenues greater than our expenditures from our local budget, and that actually goes into fund balance and increases fund balance. But this is the construct of the actual resolution. We're outlining all the expenditures that we have budgeted for this 2021, 2022 school year, and then sharing with you the revenues that come from our local, state, federal governments, our special revenue fund, which are grants and donations that don't fit into those other categories, our school nutrition, our Kids Plus, our capital outlay budget. And you'll see all of those summarized in this document. Any questions about that before I actually get into some content and not just some numbers around what's working in our budget?
I want to start with Ms. Adcock.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter. Ms. Blackwell.
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Burr.
No.
Mr. Walter.
Can you bring up the other spreadsheet that compares this year against last and maybe highlight some of those differences?
Yes. The versus prior year? It'll come right up. There you go.
Again, if you don't know at this point, this is new. If you know any of the differences or can highlight those.
Well, I'm going to actually talk about the significant differences in the PowerPoint.
Okay, that's fine.
If that's okay, and we can come back to it if it doesn't address.
Yeah, that's fine.
Ms. Sandage.
I don't. I'm going to meet with you and ask my questions, so I'm good.
Sure. Okay, great.
All right. So from a budget perspective, I just wanted to highlight some key provisions, and we've talked about this, so I don't want to bore you with redundancy, but from a state perspective, again, we received our state budget very late in the game, but it was full of lots of provisions that really benefited our district and all of the public school systems across the state of North Carolina. I thought, I think we've talked about all of the related salary and benefit provisions, so I won't repeat those. Everything that's listed on this first slide, we've talked about either prior to tonight or tonight, when I recapped the compensation information earlier. From a local budget perspective, as you all are aware, the request that we present to our county each year comes from the work of the Budget Committee, and we have just kicked off our Budget Committee work for 2022, 2023, and looking forward to being a part of that journey going forward. So the, the request that we made to our county for 2021, 2022 evolved from the Budget Committee work and was presented to this Board for approval prior to our taking it to the County Commissioners for their consideration. We had an interesting year for 2122 with regard to funding from our county. Our county actually redirected funding that they normally provide to our district for our continuation and our expansion budgets, our operating budgets, to capital needs to address our deferred maintenance. And the reason they did that is because our district, like all the others in the state of North Carolina, received such generous support from a pandemic relief perspective, whether it was from the state or from the federal ESRO dollars that we've talked about previously. And the county saw that as an opportunity to redirect the money that they normally would give us for operating expenses to really tackle a very long list of deferred capital maintenance needs and to start to make a dent in that list. And so we were prepared not to get any money from the county from a continuation or expansion budget perspective. They actually did, in fact, give us a million dollars to support our new device technology lease, so we weren't expecting that and got that, so that was good news. And that operational continuation and expansion budget has usually been about three point four million dollars a year. So they said, "Instead of giving you that for operating expenses, we're going to give you that to really take on this massive deferred capital needs list." And so that's how things worked for 2122. And just so you know, our continuation budget is simply funding that we need to continue to do what we're doing right now. Nothing new, no expansion efforts, no new programs, just to fund what we're doing right now. And then alongside of that, we will ask the county traditionally for, and also, "Could you fund these new programs or these new initiatives for us from an expansion perspective?" So the good news is, with that redirection of funding, we received almost fifteen point three million dollars in funding from our county to go towards our deferred maintenance needs, which is a really big deal, helps us to start to get some traction. You heard Chuck mention earlier, all thirty-six projects were funded for 2021, 2022 through this appropriation. And when we can spend that money towards deferred maintenance needs, it will ultimately help to lower our ongoing operating maintenance costs. So if we have new or repaired equipment, hopefully, it's not breaking as frequently, and we will minimize our maintenance and repairs expenses. And just to summarize the magnitude of that fifteen point three million dollars, normally receive about two to three million dollars from the county towards deferred maintenance needs. So it was a big commitment on behalf of our county as it relates to capital outlay for 2021, 2022. And the expectation of the county and the agreement of our district is that we would leverage our pandemic relief dollars, specifically our ESRO funding and fund balance, if necessary, to cover the three point four million dollars that we normally receive from the county in continuation and expansion budgets that we did not receive for this year because they redirected it to capital. Does that make sense? I've had lots of conversations with the county, just to make sure, since I wasn't here when all those conversations took place, that I understood what that meant going forward. I was able to clarify that, starting with 2022, 2023 budget, we are able to come back to the county and ask them for our normal continuation and expansion operating budgets in addition to our request for capital outlay as well. And they will entertain them, and they will consider them, and they will evaluate them as those requests come through the Budget Committee. And so we're excited about that. It was a one-year redirection, if you will. However, the county has made it clear that we can't get that three point four million dollars back in operating expenses until we get to 2024, 2025. So for 2022, 2023, and 2023, 2024, we can go back to them and ask for operating expenses as part of our continuation and expansion budgets. When we get to 2425, we can do the same and say, "Can we have our three point four million dollars back that was redirected in 2021, 2022?" And so I'm crystal clear with the county in that regard and just grateful for their continuing to use that three point four million dollars to help us really chip away at our deferred maintenance needs. But great conversations with them in that regard. This does summarize our capital outlay budget for 2021, 2022, and you'll see the deferred maintenance is in the center of this schedule, and that's where you summarize the over fifteen million dollars that I mentioned earlier that came to us from our county to help us with those deferred maintenance needs. In total, just under sixty-four point five million dollars in capital outlay funding from our county in this school year. And then finally, we've talked about this before, but these were the initial allotments that came to Cabarrus County Schools for our ESRO funding. And in the three large buckets, remember that we have fully spent all of ESRO one, and so no more funding available for us through ESRO one. And we've talked at length about our planning budget for ESRO two and ESRO three and our intentions for spending that money, and we are well underway in that regard as well. And so some of the initiatives and efforts that we would normally have funded locally from an operating expense perspective, we are using our ESRO monies because the county has redirected that money for this school year to our capital needs.
So, but these are the multi-year funding, right? It's not one-year funding?
Yes. The ESRO three will expire in December of 2025. So we've got a ways to go. Multi-year.
Okay. I will open it up for questions, and I'll begin with Ms. Sandage.
This is going to go back to an earlier conversation. I just truly want to understand the, the bonuses for teachers. So we discussed, I want to say it was two meetings ago, about a one thousand dollar bonus, and then that was roughly one million dollars because I had the numbers wrong. I'm thinking like a couple thousand dollars, but I had the numbers wrong. And now we're saying that that one point four or one, whatever, one million dollars is equating to five hundred dollars, and I'm just, I'm, I'm really confused there.
Okay. Well, we did talk at a high level about the opportunity to pay an additional one thousand dollars to our teachers, and in that space, I was instructed to include our certified instructional support staff as well. That's about twenty-six hundred employees, and we went off to calculate what that would cost the district, and then we started to look for ways to fund that. So at twenty-six hundred, some odd staff folks that would re- that. So at 2,600, some odd staff folks that would receive that initially discussed $1,000, that's going to be a total cost of $2.8 million to our district. And that includes the district share of FICA cost, so it's an all-in cost for the district. The recommendation that I shared earlier tonight was for $500, not the 1,000, and that total cost will be 1.4 million, and I am confident that we can fully fund that with a redirection of our initial ESER budget.
And the conversations about the, our ability to change that, that hasn't happened at this point. Like, for example, I asked about, well, you know, can we use money and fund balance to, you know, get to the $1,000?
We can, that's 100% at the board's discretion.
Okay.
I haven't acted on that yet, but that is absolutely an option for the board.
Okay. The other questions I have, I'll hold off on them.
Sure, anything.
Thank you for this presentation.
Mr. Walter.
Really, a big thanks to the county commissioners for doing what they've done to help us out like that, like that. That is a big, that's a big expense and a big deal. So thank you to them for working with us to get these projects going and completed. I think the $500 we were talking about, that's in addition to everything else that you had on your first page here.
Yes, sir, it is.
So in addition to the 1,000, in addition to 500, 300, 1,000, some, and several teachers that can get to 3,500. So it adds up quite a bit, plus the normal 12%, 12% supplement, which you said was an average of $2,000, $4,000, $4,200 for-
Depending on years of service.
For a beginning teacher up to 63. Yeah, so that's significant. Again, there are a lot of other employees that would also like bonuses too, so we've got to juggle that too. But anything we do really should go through a budget committee and a, you know, allocation process. What's the best use for those funds? Where are all the needs? And how do we make our best, you know, best bang for the buck, essentially, is how can we help kids? So I think anything that we do above using a fund balance needs to be vetted in that way somehow through a budget committee, is my opinion. But again, thank you for the, the breakdown here. That's, that's helpful, helps me understand a little better. I like the comparison between the years as well.
Thank you.
So again, thanks very much.
Mr. Fur.
I'd just like to say thank you for the in-depth material we have. It makes a difference that, it makes it easier. So thank you.
Ms. Blackwell.
Also, thank you for the in-depth presentation that you've given us. Keisha, I'm glad you brought that up. That was actually one of the things that I wanted to figure out too, was how we can make up the difference. So I know that that will be a discussion that we're going to have soon, so thank you.
Ms. Carpenter.
And would, how is our fund balance looking? Are we in good shape in our fund balance? I mean-
Yes, ma'am. Our fund balance is very healthy at right around $17 million. So I, it's not unusual for county commissioners to see a rising fund balance and say, hmm, that fund balance is getting healthy. And so there's, there's a sweet spot, and we're probably on the high end of that sweet spot, but it's a very healthy fund balance.
Well, that's what I was wondering. I mean, if we were okay, I mean, you never can tell when you need fund balance.
Absolutely.
That's why fun, fun balance, it's not if you in fund balance, but, but I didn't know where we stood with that, if, if that was a possibility. Because our teachers and our staff have worked very, very hard this year, and we understand that. And, and so if we couldn't get it out of ESER, if that is a possibility.
Yes, ma'am.
That's why I wanted to know where we were with that. Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. Adcock.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. And I just also say that if we could have come up with that 1.4 million for our teachers to make that $1,000, I would support that as well.
Okay, so I think you've heard loud and clear that we would like to have a report next week about using that money, or to at least get a, a report on the fund balance and to take a look at that, if you could. That would be great.
Sure will.
Can I have another question?
Sure.
So this goes back to your earlier presentation too, and I just want to clarify. So everyone in this district minus teachers, so certified staff, have gotten some type of bonus. Did I understand that correctly based on the list that you broke down? So if I have a TA somewhere that didn't get a bonus when all of those classified bonuses were given out, what does that mean? I hope I made sense.
It would have only meant that that TA wasn't employed when that bonus was paid.
So that means that, and I think I heard Dr. Kapiki say this at one point, but clarify me if I'm wrong. Everyone outside of teachers have received some type of bonus to date.
As long as they were employed when the bonuses were paid.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think that's the slide or the presentation piece that you're going to get to us next week, correct?
Pardon?
That's the piece of the slide that you're going to get to us next week that Ms. Sandage asked for to begin with, when we-
Oh, yeah. She had asked specifically for the AP, that, the performance bonuses.
Right.
Just one, one of the bonuses that were paid.
So can we add to that, the breakdown of the staff that we had initially that showed all the different classifications?
So all the numbers of people?
Yes, that, that will be great.
Sure.
I think that's what we all thought we were going to-
For each component, you want the number of staff that received each bonus.
Yes.
Okay, sure.
That will be great. And then I wanted to make sure that I heard as well, this round of ESER, is that going before the Budget Committee? Is that something you're discussing, discussing with them, as far as what's there?
If we redirect the money to support an additional, no, ma'am, we don't have to take that to the Budget Committee.
Okay, great. So that will just be done by us, and that will expedite that timeframe so that we could actually maybe do that in February or March?
Yeah, I would suggest if, if this comes up for board approval next week, that we immediately start the application for the budget amendment process.
Okay, great. That's good. All right, so that takes care of mine. Any other comments or questions? So those come, that information coming back to us is enough for next week?
Yes, sure.
Board members, okay. Great, thank you, Carol. Okay, so let's move on to 9.06, which is the audit contract for the fiscal 2021, 2022 year, and we keep you.
Can I ask just one clarifying question about this?
Sure.
Will this be able to go on the consent agenda or back for action next week, just so we can get it fine? I'm just a little uncomfortable because it's so late.
That's, do you need it on the consent agenda?
Whatever, please, is the board. If we can just address it next week, I'd just feel more comfortable if we can get this one-
I was actually going to play, place it on the action just because of it being the budget itself.
Okay, that'd be fine.
But if the board members are okay with that, I can do either. Action.
Okay, that's absolutely fine with me.
Normally, it's an action item, so I just kind of took that for granted.
And then just so the board knows that, once this initial budget resolution is approved, as we have changes to the budget, those will come to the board as budget amendments between now and the end of June. So just wanted to remind you of that. So my final presentation, it is time to put in front of the board our annual contract for our external audit. That takes place each year, and we are proposing that we, again, engage Anderson, Smith, and White to perform our annual audit. This will be the sixth year of our relationship with Anderson, Smith, and White. They are a highly reputable, incredibly talented audit firm that specializes in auditing public school units. So they bring a lot of expertise to the table in that regard. They are, have proposed a fee of $35,500. That is just $500 more than last year's fee, which is pretty impressive considering the level of inflation that's cropping up in our world today. I think it is a, a very fair, incredibly fair fee structure, partially due to the amazing work that has been done by the Finance Department long before I got here to make that audit run smoothly and effectively and be responsive to their requests. So I do want to share with the board, I do think it is time after this audit, because we're too close to their interim field work beginning, too late in the game, if you will, but I do believe it's time after six years with them that we consider putting that work out for bid, just as part of a normal cycle of considering, considering alternatives. But it's just, we can't pull that off and, and get this audit done the way it needs to be done, timely and effectively for the year end, June 30th, 2022. So just wanted to let the board, I've got that on my radar from when we're done with this audit.
And that was going to be my question, what your recommendation. So that's great. Okay. So hearing that, is everyone okay with consent agenda for next week?
This is one question, is this a firm you used, it's your previous?
It was, it was.
Okay, you are good.
Thank you.
Next, we will move to 9.07, the capital plan, and we will have John Legrand to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Kapiki, members of the board. This evening, I'm, I'm here to present the 2021, 22 Capital Plan Sequen, Capital Plan Sequencing Plan. And this plan, in a nutshell, lays out the sequencing of future capital projects that we anticipate in Cabarrus County Schools over the next 10 to 12 years. So the first slide is basically a disclaimer stating that this current capital plan is a snapshot of options and costs that are open to the district for discussion at this time. Future decisions, outcomes, and costs may change, influence, or redirect the plans that are presented here tonight. Those plan was developed by our Cabarrus County School Operations Team. Lots of thought of planning went into this, hours of conversation, and all those items that I spoke about were considered. It was reviewed, it was then reviewed and approved by our Cabarrus County Cabinet, and it is now pending your approval before being sent on to the county for funding purposes. So starting with number one, Arbrown McAllister is our top priority, and this is a project that is getting ready to go, get underway. It is going to begin construction. We're going to be breaking ground in April of, of this year with an anticipated start date in fall of 2024. Number two would, and again, with that would be a replacement school. That school was originally built in 1956, I think, somewhere in that era, and we would be adding 456 additional seats with this replacement school. The second priority is a replacement school for Northwest Cabarrus High School. This would replace a building that was built in 1965, and it is also going to add 450 additional seats in that northwest section of the county that I just spoke about that is experiencing rapid growth. And it is scheduled to begin, or get ground being broken in 2023, April of 2023, so about this time next year with an anticipated start date of 2026. Number three is one that moved way on up the list here in, in this, the most recent plan, and that is purchasing land for a new southern high school. Again, one of our priorities is addressing the rapidly growing area in the southwest part of our county. And in order to build schools, obviously, you've got to have land, and we are partnering with the county at this point to purchase a parcel of land in the southwest part of our county in anticipation for Southern High School to be built in several years. Number four would be Coltrane Webb. As mentioned earlier, it is a aging school, actually built in 1937, if that gives you any context on the, the condition of that school. And we are, the timing on this one is important because Arbrown McAllister will be a school that will be opening in 2024, where its existing building will potentially serve as a swing school for Coltrane Webb to go and have their, their, their campus on the, in the existing Arbrown McAllister building while their school is being built on site. That campus is only 12 acres big, therefore, it is impossible to build a replacement school on campus while we, and, and have school at the same time. So those students would be swinging over to Arbrown McAllister somewhere in the 20 to 25, 26 years, and be, being over there for two years before they return back to a brand-new facility at Coltrane Webb. Priority number five, Opportunity School. Our Opportunity School is now housed in a, a building that was built in 1922 over at the Glenn Center, and the, due to the maintenance cost and the deterioration and the ongoing cost of, of, of keeping that school up and running, we want to build a brand-new facility on an existing property here in, right over by the PLC campus, and looking at a PLC-type building, if you've ever seen that building, it's very, very nice, 100, it's got about 150 capacity for that Opportunity School. Number six would be the renovation of Mary Frances Wall. So Mary Frances Wall would move to the Arbrown McAllister campus, once Coltrane Webb has vacated it and gone back to their, their new school. And, and the, the existing Arbrown McAllister building would serve as a building after a lot of, or some renovation there to update that for that preschool and put that in a more favorable location in downtown Concord. Number seven would be the renovation of the Northwest Cabarrus High School in anticipation of turning it into Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. So as the brand-new Northwest Cabarrus High School is built, our students move out of that to the new school. We renovate the school that they just left and turn it into a middle school while increasing capacity of 300 more students to address that rapid growth in the northwest part of the county, utilizing newer portions of the campuses, gym, CTE, newer classroom wing over, and also building some new structures over in that, on that campus. Number eight, renovation of central services and auxiliary satellites. So as Mary Frances Wall would move to our, to the existing Arbrown McAllister building, that we would be able to move all the central services and auxiliary services over at the Glenn Center into that facility over on 601. So what that would do is get us completely out of, of the Glenn Center and that aging facility, and it would have closer proximity to the Ed Center and, and a newer building for them to move in with a better location. Number nine is, would be the renovation of the existing Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. So as the Northwest Cabarrus Middle School students would eventually move over to the renovated high school as their new middle school, we would use the existing Northwest Cabarrus Middle School as a new Northwest Cabarrus Elementary School, again, addressing the growth there in the northwest part. Limited rest, or renovation will be needed, providing for future growth in that area, and this would be kind of an Odell, primary Odell Elementary type setup where that school would serve as a 3.5 or a K2, while Boger would serve as the other. So number 10 is, is the future Southern High School. We're looking probably eight to 10 years out at this point, and this would, this would, as we anticipate significant growth down in that Midland area, it could potentially also relieve Hickory Ridge High School, and that would be the, the, the school that we would build on the land that we purchased up at priority number three. And then number 11 would be C.C. Griffin Middle School and Harris Road Middle School Auditorium. We have two middle schools in the entire county that don't have access to an auditorium, and those are the two. And I know they have been asking for a while for a auditorium and a performing arts center of their own, and this would, this would provide equity in that, in that realm as for those two schools. And number 12 would be our final priority on the sequencing list, which is Beverly Hills. A new, a new Beverly Hills Elementary School with 500 students on site and 100 additional seats in a new building for Beverly Hills. So that is the capital plan. If you look at the last slide, or I'm going to flip over to the last slide, you can see that this is a not, these are not cheap endeavors or cheap projects. As a matter of fact, they have, it has grown over the last year and a half. That, that number has increased by about 26% at total number, $440 million for each of these 12 projects, due to the rise in construction cost, supplies, and, and all the, the inflation that is going on in, in that construction area or the construction world at this point. So that is the breakdown. I will now take any questions for any, from anyone on our proposed capital plan.
Okay, and I will begin with Ms. Adcock.
Thank you, John. I really like this. I think it's great. I think a lot of thought has gone into this as far as growth goes, and I appreciate all the work that was put in for this with you and your team, so thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter.
Yes, and I agree with you, and, and the only concern, I, you know where my concern, I wanted to flip-flop back 11 and 12, because again, we know the cost, we see that. And two, I know that we, we talk about the growth. I think we're going to see, and we talked about this basically when we were talking about all the economic growth that we're going to see with all these new, new businesses that we're going to be seeing come, coming- that we're going to be seeing come, coming soon to us. And I think we'll see some of that in the downtown area, because a lot of this growth is going to be out on 29, you know, a lot of these companies. And a lot of these people will be. And I'm glad we're seeing Arbrown and Coltrane Webb up at the top of the list. But, two, Beverly Hills, that's a downtown school too. And a lot of people look at these smaller schools when they come, especially to a new area. And so, I think we may have to look at that. And when we, this board originally put Beverly Hills back on, it was supposed to be right after Coltrane Webb. I know that Ms. Grimsley, she was one said, no, well, Coltrane Webb, second, after Arbrown. I said, okay, Beverly Hills will come third. And now, we got Beverly Hills as the very last thing. So, that's why, you know...
Needs change, is all I can say.
Yeah, it changes. But then, too, things have changed too. We've seen these businesses, these new businesses, which I'm very, very happy for, but that's going to bring a lot of new people here. And a lot of them will maybe want to go to the older homes in downtown Concord. And so, a lot of people will go to those downtown schools. And so, that's going to bring more people. So, I mean, that's just one little thing. But we may have to change this. And as you said, this is a living document, and it could change. But I just wanted to bring that to the attention. But a thank you, everybody, for the hard work on this.
That is great. Thank you. And just to note your side comment, we know these projects are so far out, this probably will change, not just once, not just twice, but several times. So, but thank you, absolutely, I agree with you. Ms. Blackwell.
So, again, thank you for all of your hard work. I did have a question, just kind of thinking outside of the box with some of these. Say, like, with the auditorium additions, what are the processes that we could use? Like, Carolyn, you did mention these new companies that are coming in. What if they wanted to sponsor one of these auditoriums? I mean, is that something that we could do as a, as a district?
That's something we'd definitely be open to. We are, you know, if funding is available and they're willing to partner with us to do that, and they, that is their passion, or that is where they want their money to go, that's something we could definitely, we would definitely entertain.
So, let that be heard out there to all of these businesses that are coming to the Cabarrus County area. I think that would be a great opportunity to partner with us.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
Mr. Ferr.
Yeah, going to number 10 there, Mr. Tim Lawler and I would like to know, now where is that going to be?
I knew you had a lot of interest in that, Tim.
No, I just wanted to know if you've learned how to pronounce it yet.
That is in Midland.
Thank you, that's all I wanted.
And I respectfully apologize for calling it Midland. I'm still trying to, trying to get that. Thank you for that correction.
John, bless your heart.
So, what does it cost again of this auditorium performing arts center?
The two combined would be 8.5 million, so roughly 4 million, four and change for...
So, does that cost somebody doing both at the same time, or is that, is it split out, or what do we, how do we?
Once we get to that point, that, depending on where we are, that's way down the list. But if it's, if it is priority number one, that is something we could definitely do at one time.
Which one of these are in the five-year, expected in five years, of four up to five?
We're the, yes, we're about one through five. As it stands right now, the new Opportunity School would be 2026, projected out, and then, once we get past that, you know, we're, we're getting farther than five years down the road.
So, one through five is the five-year capital plan, essentially?
As it stands right now, yeah.
Okay. I like the Opportunity School idea. I think that's, that's a good model that they have at the PLC. I think that's a great thing that we can move that up. That'd be great. I'm not comfortable with Coltrane Webb expansion on the same site, adding another 250 students to a tiny site that is a traffic nightmare to begin with. I don't think adding additional students to that location is a good idea. So, that's, I'm not in favor of that. The rest of them seem okay to me.
Thank you.
Ms. Sandich.
So, I appreciate this presentation. I was able to ask a lot of questions and get them answered in our small group presentation. So, I don't have but one question. So, I was trying to figure out, as it relates to transparency purposes, how do folks ask questions of this? Is there a way for that?
They're certainly welcome to contact us if they have questions. If you receive questions as a board that you need an answer to, by all means, send it on to myself, and I can definitely get that answer for you to. We want to be as upfront, that's why we're presenting this here tonight. We want to make sure that everyone understands what our anticipated course of action is, and the rationale behind that. So, of course, we're, we're willing to answer any questions that the public may have.
Thank you.
Okay, with that in mind, and knowing that this is a fluid document, but does need to be presented to the county commissioners, is everyone good for consent agenda for next week?
I'd like to sit on action. Sorry.
Is there information that you want, or?
I just think we have a vote on the budget.
Okay. Board members?
I think, I mean, can we take a vote on whether or not to send it to consent or action? Because I think a lot of these things have a very specific timeframe. Did I understand that correctly? Like, we need to get moving on some of these things.
Yes, with, with the first one especially, Roberta Road, and then, we will begin the gaining the architecture, or seeking architecture firms for the new Northwest Cabarrus High School here in the near future.
I'm okay with consent.
Okay. Everybody else, consent? Okay. All right. We're going to leave it on consent, Mr. Walter, okay?
We'll have to have it pulled next week, but thanks.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Legrand.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, board members, now we will move to the action agenda, 10.01, being the legislative committee appointment, which is the position that I hold for this year. And I just need a motion to approve my continued spot on that committee. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for you to continue.
Thank you. Mr. Walter's my second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much. That is unanimous vote. We have moved 10.02, and I already taken care of that. Dr. Kapiki, do you have anything else?
No, ma'am, but I'd just like to commend Mr. Legrand and his hard work on the presentation that she just gave to the board. As you all know, a lot of work goes into that, and there's a lot of moving parts. I think the detail that he puts into that report is outstanding, so I appreciate his hard work. So, thank you, Mr. Legrand.
Thank you. And I think it needs to definitely be noted again, that we have a great relationship with the county commissioners, and tonight's proven that. We have a working budget, getting ready to get started, and they are huge participants in that process. And, Mr. Legrand, we do appreciate the capital improvement plan. That was a lot of hard work. All right, thank you. So, with that being said, I will just remind the viewing audience that we will have our business meeting next Monday, February the 14th. And with that, I'll ask for a motion that the board convene in closed session to consult with an attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A3, and to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute 143-3181A6.
Same there.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Ms. Carpenter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And with that, we will say goodnight to our viewing audience, and we will see you next Monday at our regularly scheduled business meeting. Goodnight.